And the clips moved. Looks like Rockford keeps a lot off the hook. I read that memo. Former employee.
Hello, how are you?
Well, hold on, I gotta.
Oh, wow, that's really good.
I'm not, I'm not done.
For a fact, come on, doll.
There you go.
My fingers are up.
It's all set, you're ready.
Yeah.
Seven, there was no traffic. Then somebody mentioned they were all headed to Wyoming at 5:30 in the morning.
Well, but I think I have time because. I think Linderson's got a picture of the stars.
Yeah, he flew himself to Scotts Bluff with a good friend who has a little beat up little plane. And yeah, he sent, so they were in a total blackout, a hundred percent the whole time. Pictures of a star that looked just like huge that came out.
That was awesome.
Scotts Bluff, Nebraska.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss this item with you tonight. This is one that has been examined for quite some time. And we have been fortunate enough to be able to take the opportunity to dig into some data and try to define what our baseline figures are. And so tonight, what we're going to do is kind of walk through what research has been accomplished, what the city will be proposing to look at moving forward with respect to trying to achieve a rate where we can lower our greenhouse gas emissions. As well as kind of take a trip down memory lane as to how we got here in the first place with respect to some other initiatives that the city has had in place for a while. So we'll go ahead and get started here. So one of the things that's always at the forefront of everybody's mind is what is sustainable? What does it really mean? So for us, we define sustainability really with a triple bottom line. So it's economic, it's environmental, as well as social. And the confluence of all three of those items is where sustainability exists. And so at the heart of anything that the city has undertaken thus far in history, such as the retrofitting of lighting here, retrofitting of lighting at our wastewater treatment plant, as well as our water plant, it has really been to look at what's economic, socially, and environmentally efficient. So let's look at, again, looking at sustainability, what the four components of greenhouse gas emissions are in the city. So this particular definition comes from a lot of different groups, but we've adopted this inasmuch that this is where greenhouse gas emissions that you could trace back to the root or a city would come from. So they come from four components. Number one, from electricity consumption. Number two, natural gas consumption. Thirdly, solid waste generation. Interestingly enough, obviously, people throw their trash away if they don't recycle. It goes to the, goes to a landfill and it outgasses methane, which is a greenhouse gas. And then lastly, there's greenhouse gas emissions generated through transportation, which shouldn't come as a surprise to you either, inasmuch that when we drive, we're creating Knox and Sox that go up into the atmosphere and create that greenhouse gas emission component. So what the city has done thus far is actually created the Energy Action Plan, which the council adopted earlier this year, the Excel Energy Plan. And that actually helped to lay the groundwork for data that we had collected or looked at that helped us to define where we are currently with respect to our emissions. So we actually utilized 2016 data. And I know that people were saying, go back further to 2005. The problem with that, from my standpoint, as I was doing the research, the data from 2005 was not in such a format that would help us to lend, to make it simpler for us to define where we are with our emissions. There's a lot of components that were missing. We possibly could dig through some other resources to find that, but we wanted to use 2016 as our baseline data year. And while some may say, that's not really fair because you've already done all this work to get to where we are, we do believe that there are some other sustainability initiatives that the city could entertain and look at that would help us. So the following slides provide a snapshot of our overall energy consumption and our estimated greenhouse gas emissions for that year of 2016. So if we look right now, our 2016 total electrical, electricity use was 343 million kilowatt hours. Now, this data, again, was gleaned from Excel. Anybody actually has the ability to go onto Excel's website and look at what's called the Annual Community Energy Report. And their report is really quite extensive. I mean, it goes into not only electricity usage for the different categories. Obviously, you can see here that our residential sector generates about 28% of that consumption, 72% from commercial and industrial. But you would, you would find that there are other sources on here too, such as street lighting, metered streetlights, un-metered streetlights, as well as some other sources. So that's our electricity consumption. Natural gas use, seventeen and a half million thermes. And again, again, disproportionately, commercial, industrial has the greater usage. And again, that makes sense for the size and scope of some of the operations that we have in town. And our residential sector, again, is at 39%. If you look at the energy consumption data as itself, here's a particular breakdown, which breaks down into metric tons of carbon emission. So as you can see, business generates in 2016, 146,211 metric tons of carbon dioxide and residential was only 58.2. I shouldn't say only, but that's quite a bit. Street lighting is interesting. If you look at our street lighting that's metered, generated five metric tons and the un-metered street, or the non-metered streetlights were 1,100. For a total of 205,573 metric tons of CO2. With respect to the natural gas consumption, again, here you can see the breakdown with the preponderance or the majority of the metric tons of carbon dioxide being generated through the businesses, business sector. For again, about a total of 92.7 thousand carbon tons, metric tons of CO2. Petroleum fuel, so this petroleum fuel only is from the city. And as we'll talk a little bit later, the transportation piece was the most difficult piece for us as staff to try to figure out the formula for how much CO2 is generated or greenhouse gas emission generated by transportation. But this data is from the city's service center. So we dispensed 83,000 gallons roughly of unleaded E-85, which generated 729.1 metric tons of CO2. Diesel, again, there are different gradations of diesel. If you get into it, you can look at reconstituted diesel, biodiesel. And we use actually a mix of bio, biodiesel and regular diesel. So it's about 59, almost 60,000 gallons of diesel was dispensed. And that generated 618.7 metric tons for a total of 1,347 tons of CO2 in 2016. So again, looking at the constituent data from solid waste, there is a number of formulas that you can utilize. Essentially, the formula that we looked at was that each person in our community generates 692 pounds of CO2 per person per year. So our total emissions, if you look at that, just predicated on just our residents, not what's generated by the business community, is almost 12,000 tons of CO2. The data, I tried to glean some data from Waste Management, but as you know, we have 12 hauling companies in town. And so whilst many of them do take their garbage to Waste Management to have a transfer station, some don't. Some take it to Denver, some take it directly to landfill in the foothills and outside of Golden. And so that makes that calculation a little bit more difficult. So again, as I enunciated here, the transportation constituent data, the formula is really quite complex, especially if you're just looking at trying to use the, a per person per trip. Because as we know, not all of our residents own cars and not all of them travel. Some of them use public transit. And so there's a number of formulas for that as well. And that's going to take us a little bit more time, a lot more time actually, to try to figure out what that constituent data is at this point in time. So what we're dealing with right now are the three main constituents, electrical consumption, natural gas consumption, as well as the solid waste component that adds to that tons of CO2. So our estimated total right now, and again, it's an incomplete number without looking at the entire data from transportation, is about 311,388.8 tons of CO2. Now, in comparison, for example, if you were to look at the city of Boulder, which I know is a much larger community than us, but they actually have a climate action plan. And they said they generate 1.5 million tons of CO2 in their base year. So that kind of puts things into perspective a little bit for us here. So what have we done, again, to move forward with looking at our energy, energy plan to deal with this? And again, looking at sustainability from the standpoint of it being environmentally, social, and economically vital, the city did adopt in March of 2016, the climate, their Energy Action Plan. So the target for our overall consumption, community wide, was a 1% annual reduction in energy consumption, with the city taking a little bit more aggressive role, as you recall from that plan, for its facilities. So the success of the plan will actually reduce our carbon footprint by 5,300 tons of CO2 on an annual basis. And so if you look at the equivalency, the EPA has a great calculator for that. If you go to the, you know, epa.gov site, that actually works out to be about 1,200 passenger vehicles driven per year. So that's tremendous, that's huge. But as you recall, again, we are 380 tons, so that's a lot difference between 380 and this 5,300. So as part of that municipal initiative that we talked about in the plan, we've done quite a bit of work already to try to poise ourselves to lower that. We've instituted a lot of photovoltaic here in the community. The city also participates with Excel. They have a solar garden. We purchased some of our power through that solar garden and made that investment. Again, we have PV or photovoltaic cells in four of our key locations right now. Civic Centers being one of them. Got to check those out today on the roof. They look good, although the eclipse didn't help us for that period of time. Mallie Center has them, Inglewood Rec Center and Police and Fire. And we have a smaller insulation at the service center, but we do have opportunities for more PV in the future. We have the potential for a major biogas recapture and scrubbing project, which you've heard significantly about over the last several months. We've done energy efficient lighting installations throughout many of our facilities. We've got rid of the old T-12 bulbs and now we have the more efficient bulbs, but we could even go further, obviously, as we'll talk about in a bit. Anything that we're going to be looking at with this has that economic component or price component. And as you know where our cap projects are, that's going to be difficult, but we might have some opportunities further with our utilities. We looked at, we have also implemented single stream recycling here.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
The last slide.
Yeah.
We had information last year where people, or I guess it's still the same slide.
Okay.
Where the solar panels were not working at some of the locations. Do we have some information that can be provided on how much the solar is contributing?
Sure.
And if they're all up and functioning?
Yes.
The dates on those?
Okay.
I think at 20 years, it becomes our property.
Correct. Yeah, we have a.
A yearly contract supposedly.
With Amoresco, yes.
So if we could find out where we're at with that and the status of that?
Okay.
I know that was, it's actually a small amount for the solar, but I know it's contributing some and I'd like to know what that is.
Sure, we can pull that data for you. Actually, all of our PV right now, systems are up and operational. Through working with Amoresco, they've insured because they're the ones who actually stand to gain the most from their investment. As we talked last week about power purchase.
Tax credit, they got their investment mostly at the beginning of the whole thing.
Correct, but it, but it's a, it's a reverse. It's like doing a cost segregation study. If it's not working, then it could impact them if it's not working. So they fixed that for us.
Let us get a.
Yeah. Sure. And I mentioned the single stream recycling, that has also helped us. But if, again, there's a more comprehensive list of all the initiatives that the city has undertaken. I couldn't put them all on here on this one slide. And that can be found in our Energy Action Plan. There's a page and a quarter of different products that we've implemented here, including, again, the biggest thing that the city has done, undertaken, is the, at our utility plants where we have large pumps and motors, is put VFDs on them, variable frequency drives. In other words, when pumps, when the old pumps would kick on, it would be, it's either on or off. And that takes a huge amperage draw, it's a lot of electricity. With a VFD, it actually allows that pump to spool up slowly. Then once it gets up to a certain capacity, it doesn't shut off, it keeps running, but it utilizes a lesser amount of electricity and stays on. So VFDs have really been important for us for mixing at wastewater, as well as our water treatment plant. And we're going to continue to look at opportunities for that because we still have a few areas where VFDs are not in play. And I believe the city council recently approved a VFD replacement project for the dewatering operation at the Littleton Inglewood Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is going to have a tremendous impact as well, as those pumps are spooled up and running a lot of time. So the 2018 work program, as we're looking into 2018 and forward, how are we going to achieve what not only the citizen group case has asked us to look for, but also what is, what is going to help us to create a more sustainable environment for the city of Inglewood? Number one, council, would be the execution of the items enunciated within the action plan, the Energy Action Plan. That would include any of a number of things, and a couple of them are mentioned later on in here as well, such as working with, looking at our ESCO agreements that we have right now. And ESCO is Energy Service Company. So we have four agreements for four facilities with Amoresco. But some of the, some of that PV, as Councilmember Berantine did mention, we were having some problems with. It's obviously not the newest of technology. Can we go back to them and look at seeing if they're willing to invest or extending these agreements by putting in newer, more efficient technology that exists today? As you may know, like everything else, technology improves. The photovoltaic cells we have today are not as efficient as the photovoltaic cells that are coming out on the market right now. We also want to promote local energy service providers. So a majority of the work that needs to be done to achieve this is to have our residents and our businesses look at where they can make a difference. And specifically, I know for many of our residents, they don't think about the energy efficiency notion of what they can do to help. And I think what we're going to try to do is do a public education campaign, more so than what has already been done, to bring awareness to our residents of programs and service providers that, who work with Excel can help people with rebates to help lower the cost of implementing sustainable or more energy efficient windows, insulation, heating and cooling systems. We also want to collaborate with groups and individuals that can help us to attain the goal. And so again, the city is required under this energy plan to reduce its footprint by three and a half percent over that length of the plan. But again, it's going to take a more concerted effort with everybody in the community, businesses and residents, to make that happen. And so there are groups within the community, or even corporations, that have a vested interest too, to help bring energy efficiency to us, and we want to work with them. We want to study additional alternative energy projects, as has been discussed, not only at the wastewater plant, with respect to the biogas remediation, the capture, which is very, very important. We also want to look at other opportunities for projects, and we'll look at some of those here in a few minutes. Many of them have been talked about for a long time, but we want to look at other means and ways in which we can invest in photovoltaic power, as that is really growing here in this state of Colorado, as well as even wind, for that matter, small scale wind. And then certainly want to develop a fiscal strategy around our sustainable initiatives. As we just discussed last week with respect to our budget, this is going to take a capital investment. Little of this can be done with, by somebody else investing in us or using our property where we're going to get some sort of benefit. But we need to develop a fiscal strategy, and I think that's what's going to take us some time, so that we're not pressed or put into a situation where we simply can't afford to do a cap project. But we have to look at the prioritization of this amongst other competing capital project goals, as we just discussed. We have that deficit, or delta, I should say, not a deficit, but a delta of $70 million in cap projects over the next five years that we have to figure that out. This would be in addition to that. So it's going to take some study, as well as a plan to make it happen. So options for study right now, obviously up in the top left hand corner, you see a newer photovoltaic garden, if you will, that is small in scale. However, these particular panels follow the sun during, throughout, during and throughout the day. And we're looking at opportunities for implementation at our wastewater treatment plant. We have significant land holdings there that would still afford us the opportunity to do that. The bottom lower left hand corner is something that's near and dear to me, as I've done some small scale hydro in Idaho. Small scale hydro makes sense wherein you have a whole lot of head or pressure going downhill, like we do into the Platte River. We discharge 23 million gallons of water a day, and we're not gaining the benefit of gravity, if you will, that could drive a small scale hydro solution that could be placed there. This is a similar solution that's used, I believe it's in British Columbia. To the right is another opportunity, that's an Archimedes screw. You don't have to go too far back in time to see that that particular technology is still as salient today as it was back when Archimedes was around for moving water. But in this particular instance, again, this could be utilized on the Big Dry Creek. Currently, you, the council has approved agreement to divert the water from Big Dry Creek into a mixing zone within the South Platte. And that would be another opportunity to use the gravity or the pressure that's been created or generated by the Big Dry Creek stream itself to drive a turbine, to make that work. That top middle picture is of small scale wind. And not every propeller needs to look like a two megawatt, you know, generator for power. And those have a number of other environmental externalities, if you will, bird strikes and things like that. This small scale wind actually turns cylindrical instead of through the normal rotation of a prop. And so it's more friendly to wildlife, but at the same time, it does generate power. And so we have areas, not only here in the city, but more so at our farm property. And if you've been out to the farm, you know the wind blows a lot out there, it seems like all the time. So we might have an opportunity out there to look at a wind, a wind farm, if you will, on a smaller scale. The picture on the right is kind of whimsical, but this is something that is being done and utilized elsewhere in metropolitan areas, where it's wind generation on top of office buildings. And as you know, as you might imagine, this particular technology would be dependent more so on weather patterns. But in cities specifically, they found there's a heat island effect, but there's also solar, solar winds that are generated by heat that could turn a turbine as well, to generate power. We don't want to not look at something that could be viable, so this is something that we could look at as well, here in our metropolitan area, within our corporate boundaries. So those are things that are going to be studied, or actually are being looked at right now by various staff and departments. So the conclusion is this, council. You know, further study is going to be necessary for us to determine how to reach the goal of the 30% reduction. That's an aggressive goal for us. However, I think that it's one in which we could and should be working towards, again, for the three purposes stated earlier, for sustainability. Again, we want to work and desire to work collaboratively with our citizen and business community to accomplish this goal, as the city cannot do in and of itself. Third, we want to determine whether or not further climate action plans appropriate too. And so this is something that we'd be looking for direction from council. I've had, a few of you have reached out to me and said you would like to see us do more of a climate action plan, such as what Boulder has, or Louisville, or some of these other communities. And we're open to that, but we just want to make sure there's some consensus for that, as well as the understanding that that's going to take some time and some monetary resources to complete. And then lastly, you know, a major focus of 2018 for us really needs to be identifying projects and funding to reach that further and higher greenhouse gas emission reduction target within our goal of fiscal sustainability. And the Climate Action Plan, or I keep, got to quit calling that, the Energy Action Plan that we have in place, has some targets and some projects that we're looking towards doing. You know, mainly, it's dealing with the low hanging fruit first, and that's the lighting that we have and the efficiency of some of the building components. And one of the things that, as you saw from last week in our capital budget, is the potential to put VFDs on the heating and cooling system in this building. Right now, we have, I think, five or six Liebert units on the roof, and it's basically a brand name for a giant, you know, cooling, a cooling system, and none of those have VFDs. And so what you may, will, probably will see coming forward, to not only extend the life of those units, which are now approaching, you know, 35, 40 years old, VFDs would help to extend their, and extend their life as well, as those units are really quite expensive, I believe. I've heard from Dan Long, our facilities manager, that they're half million to a million dollars a piece. And so that's not something you want to see let go. So we want to bring forth those projects where they make sense and work with you, council, for approval on other capital projects that needs to, need to be accomplished. So in a quick nutshell, council, that is where we're starting from, and that's where we are. Obviously, there's much more work that needs to be done with this, but we are kind of zeroing in now on the point where at least we understand where our starting point is, as well as start to look at projects that make sense to help, help us to reach those goals. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
I just first want to say thank you so much for digging into this and doing so much research to get us to this place. I know it was not easy and I'm sure it was a lot of work. And to me, it seems like a pretty quick turnaround of the information, so thank you for that. I have a couple of questions. Where do you think our biggest growth opportunities are for solar? Would it be the wastewater treatment plant?
If, in fact, the city were to do a project, yes, that would certainly be a place. You know, other, other places for that, where we have less desirable ground in some of our parks, and not to call on any of our parks as being ugly or not functional, but if we look, Centennial Park has a really, some really good opportunities for that in some of the spaces that are there that are underutilized today. That could still obviously afford and allow for recreational activity, but at the same time, be close to the grid. It's close already to the overhead power lines that exist. And that's one of the biggest things that, when we are looking at doing further PV, you need to be close to the grid. And that park certainly is, and is open, more so than some of our other urban parks wherein there is a large tree canopy that would prohibit or limit the amount of sun availability or power that could be generated. But yeah, that's, that, those are some of the easy places we'd look at. We also have land at the service center. I believe. I believe they call it the Back Forty. It's not really 40 acres, but it's a back acreage there that also has some ability, perhaps, to look at that. And one of the things that we would need to do, obviously, would be to work with folks that are smarter than staff here, who are in that business, to ascertain whether or not those locations would be prime. But from early research already done, through actually the biogas study, engineers from Corolla who performed that study also thought very highly of the property at the wastewater plant for PV.
Great. I also heard recently about these, some kind of apparatus or something you can put on, like police vehicles. So when the car's on, it kind of doesn't use any gas, but still allows them to use their communication tools. I have no idea how much those things cost, but that could be something that we could look into if it's...
Yeah, there are a number of tools. Obviously, one of the things with our automobiles right now, they're constantly idling, and they do that to run all the electronics that are in the car. But I've seen systems, like as you've mentioned, that do that, that shut things off, but still allow for power to, you know, to be generated, to provide the communications equipment, as well as the MDTs in the car with power, as well as cooling. Well, obviously, we don't have any K-9 units, but there are a number of companies that have systems for the back doors of car, the police cars, that allow for fans to bring in or continue the movement of air in and out of the vehicle.
Thank you. And I think our energy action plan is a good place to start. Like you said, it has a lot of low-hanging fruit, and I think we have set out a good achievable goals there. And one of the most important pieces of that is we have an arm reaching out to commercial, and obviously, they can benefit a lot from saving money and saving energy, so we're working towards that. So I'm really excited about that. So hopefully, we can kind of push that further, and that will help meet our overall goal a lot more quickly. And I would be in favor of, at some point, doing a formal climate action plan. I don't know when is the right time to start that, but I would definitely be in favor of that. And I'm absolutely in favor of the wastewater treatment bio gas project.
Thank you.
When should we expect an evaluation or assessment of the current one we just put in, what a couple of months ago, on its, the results of that? Are we planning on following up once a year? When is it reasonable to expect some data back from how well we're doing? Because we just put it in place, we don't even know how effective we're...
The solar piece?
Energy action.
Energy action plan, yeah. No, it's an annual, it's an annual review.
Okay, so we'll get that back in May or June of...
Roughly.
Of next year?
Yeah.
And I think then we can make some assessments of how we're doing and how close we are to the 30%, or whether we can go over that.
Sure.
Then the Big Dry Creek, the turbines which we're talking about.
Right.
Is there an RFP that's already gone out for that, or are we looking at that?
No, we have not done any of these things, obviously, because much of that would require some engineering. One of the things that has been discussed, and I believe they are, as you heard from Tom Brennan last week, with the approval, two weeks ago, with the approval of the Big Dry Creek diversion, he does have small-scale hydro involved in that. And that's designed within that project, within the project budget of the $1.2 million, $600,000 of which is coming from Denver Water. That does have, I believe, a small-scale hydro component built into it. It could be bigger, though. That component is just to run enough power for the lighting, basically at the Union Boulevard power, you know, for the power for that plant.
But I have talked to some, I mean, there are private companies similar to what we found out on Thursday with the biogas that might be interested if they can recoup that
Sure.
Cost, that they will do the infrastructure for us, then it wouldn't cost us anything.
True.
And we'd be making something off it, so if we could find out what the options are for that. That's all I had.
I can certainly have Mr. Brennan follow up on that. Thanks.
I'd just affirm the other thing saying about biogas, particularly with our wastewater, I think that's excellent. I wanted to ask you, what have you seen from other cities, and maybe there's something in the Boulder one, that talks about commercial and industrial? I mean, we can control and work on our own city buildings and what we do with our fleet and everything.
Yeah.
And we can try to strongly encourage our residential, and we've done some energy plans there too. But what kinds, I mean, those things have to be done delicately. However, I just heard on the radio on the way here that Walmart is coming up, has a huge plan for a number of things, and, you know, they're finding it's difficult because you've got to work with your end users as well, and so it's a complicated process for any business, small or large.
No, no doubt about it. And it's interesting that you mention that. Obviously, there's been a lot made recently of the president's decision to pull out of the Paris Accord. One of the things that most of the people in the energy business have said, there's no way that cities or states in and of themselves are going to be able to pick up that load that the president is not willing to allow our country to do. And matter of fact, in your latest governing magazine, if you get that magazine, there is an article called Discord, and in this particular article, this is hitting on some of the things, the city of Inglewood's already known for quite some time, but a gentleman by the name of Gerard, from a think tank in Washington DC, I think it's a broking institution, says, "There are at least three crucial areas where states and localities can make the most difference in lieu of federal leadership, specifically renewable energy." You know, investing in renewable energy. Secondly, is energy efficiency, which this city has been a leader within with doing energy efficiency types of projects. And thirdly, one that is still unfolding on the national level, but that's the carbon pricing. That's the RIN issue that, you know, you've all talked about and discussed before. And so when you talk about what other cities are finding, I think they're finding that their scope is, there's limited, but they're doing what they can, and that is addressing those low-hanging fruit of energy efficiency renewables, as well as some who are more sophisticated and have maybe cast a thousands of staff, like Boulder does, to actually figure out how to make that investment into carbon pricing to make that work, and actually creating carbon pricing structure within their community for their business and industrial segment to invest within.
We don't even have very strong control of our own energy company here, so, I mean, that would take some pretty serious collaboration.
Correct.
I mean, Boulder's gone back, though, to Excel, haven't they?
They have. I think they've entered into a settlement agreement with Excel Energy to provide energy. I think they were playing a big game of chicken, and I think they got a lot out of playing that game of chicken. But frankly, yeah, we don't have control over Excel, but I will say Excel has some incredible, incredible programs.
They have some motivation to do this.
Yeah.
And it does have to do with the three Es.
It does.
I mean, the economics of it makes sense, so you have to look at it from both sides, the economics. So I would love to hear what other cities of our size that are first-tier cities might be dealing with in terms of action plan. And I like our goals so far. I'm glad that we're continuing to work on them, and so I want to see this held out as an important part of our living healthy and creating a sustainable, living natural environment for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go back to Councilmember Barantine, I've got a couple of comments and questions here. First of all, thank you for the staff. I think there's a lot of heavy lifting there to kind of get us a good starting point, so thank you for that. I know the substantial sort of lead time and study necessary to kind of get these projects moving and off the ground, so I appreciate. I think this process is getting us poised to find out, you know, what are the next steps that we can do to kind of take this to the next level. I did want to try to understand a little bit about how you got to this 5,300. Candidly, I was a little disappointed with that number, and I think we can do better. The question for me, I guess, is about, how did you calculate that? I understand how we kind of calculated the baseline.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I guess I don't totally because of the transportation formula kind of issues, but I'm guessing you attempted to get a baseline of what you think consumption is citywide, and then reduce that based on what the energy action plan calls for of, you know, 1% and 3% and those kind of things?
Yeah, so that 1% reduction in energy consumption that you saw, that equates that 5,300 tons of carbon dioxide removed.
Does that account for solid waste and/or transportation?
No, that's just the energy piece. And so if we were to work more so with respect to our solid waste piece, which I'm not sure what that looks like quite yet, and I'm not advocating here tonight for a single-stream waste program where you only have one hauler. But it really would mean a lot more people recycling, and we might need to look at food waste, because food waste, obviously, is what generates a significant portion of the methane. It's outgassing as it rots or as it reduces itself. And so there are green waste programs, and as well as food waste programs that we might wish to look at and work with some of our haulers to actually have a type of program. It could be subscription for our residents who are interested in that, or restaurants, because they're the ones who are generating a significant portion of that waste that, again, goes into the landfill and as it decays, outgasses.
I think we just need to take a step and think about how we're going to kind of couch this to the public. Again, in my mind, this 5,300 is a little bit of a disappointing number, and maybe we need to get our arms around the transportation savings, as well as sort of the solid waste savings game plans. You know, my thought was that we could reduce, based on our goals, based upon just general efficiencies of the market without mandates, and then add on our special projects on top of that, I think is a reasonable way to kind of get us to a projection. You know, and looking at each of our special projects, we could start to add those on to the bottom line and come up with what I think is a very reasonable and intellectually honest goal for us. And so some of those obvious, you know, some of those areas, obviously, would be some of these low-hanging fruit areas that we're talking about, the wastewater biogas project. I think we've got our arms around what that's going to do. I do think we need more information about the solar garden test that we've kind of
Sure.
Participated in with Arapahoe County to try to decide what is the appropriate model for solar going forward. Is it a garden model? Is it, you know, more of a privatized model like we used with Amoresco? And just for the benefit of the council, recall that when we did that deal with Amoresco, they guaranteed the savings, but also suggested that 10% of our electrical will be generated from those panels, from the organization's use or consumption. I love the idea of wind and hydro. I think we need to kind of greenlight looking at engineering some of those projects to get an idea of what the costs are and what the potential payback period is on some of those things, just like we are looking at the wastewater biogas now. I think I'd like to get an idea of what the lighting, you know, fixture and lighting sort of changes that we've gone through, what the sort of net result of that is, that perhaps we could add on to that sort of bottom line, as well as the VFD sort of upgrades that you're describing, those variable frequency drives that kind of let some of our, like Councilmember Martinez was describing, allow some of our HVAC machinery and things to operate perhaps at a better energy efficiency. But I love the idea of looking at the vehicles as well. I think we need a little bit of detail about what an energy action climate plan, I'm sorry, what an climate action plan entails. You know, what are the specific mandates that, you know, differentiates that from, or are there any, I guess, that would differentiate that from an energy action plan? Or is it just more of a comprehensive view that takes into account solid waste and transportation? Is it the latter?
That's the latter, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And hearing that that's the case, I'd be wholly supportive of moving forward with that right away. And I think that's all I had. I believe I'm going to go to Councilmember Russell, then Yates. I'll come back to Barantine in just a moment, give everybody a bite of the apple here.
Just a couple of things that I just heard that I would like to address. This single payer going with one trash company. I know that Councilmember Olson asked a while back why we did not have recycling at the Simon Center. I went to the meeting a couple of weeks ago on Saturday morning, and part of the reason that we don't have recycling at the Simon Center is because waste management, the added cost, it is not fiscally affordable. And so the bottom line is, for me, the bottom line is always the budget. We are in deep trouble, and I don't think we can move forward on any of this if we don't have the finances. Because if we use this to destroy the city, it's all over. So I'm not saying that I'm not all about doing the things that we can that make sense, but to put us, we are already in trouble without even thinking about this. And if it's going to cost us a lot of money. The question that came up for me when Joe was talking about the Amoresco thing, where we were generating 10% of our electrical needs from that, is there figures that we have actually been accomplishing that goal?
Those figures have not been provided to us, that I've seen. Matter of fact, there's, I can ask for those reports and actually see where they can tell us how much has been generated, because they're actually selling the power to the grid. So I will endeavor to try to get that for you. At one point in time, I did see a report, and it looked fairly robust with respect to what's been generated from two facilities. I haven't seen the Civic Center. I only saw what's been generated by the Malle, as well as the police station, so want to see what, see what that looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
You were talking... There we go. All right. You said there would be some additional cost to trying to track what we're doing for our carbon footprint. What, how much do you think that would cost the city to actually do it?
I don't think it's going to be too terribly expensive. I just think it's something that we haven't been looking at. Again, this city creates lots of data, and in many instances, we're not utilizing that data to our best benefit, if you will. However, I think that the energy consumption data is something that appears in each of our monthly bills. If we could have somebody just key in, input into an Excel spreadsheet, which, by the way, Excel, Excel the company, not Excel the spreadsheet, could give us, we could actually start programming in our own data and tracking that for all of our facilities. So it's just another administrative function that we would be taking on. I think, though, if, in fact, the city were desirous of us moving forward with some sort of climate action plan, or something in addition to the energy action plan that's already being looked at by Excel Energy themselves, that would require some additional staffing time to make that happen. And I'm not sure exactly where I place that right now. It may be, maybe public works, but it may be also in finance.
Okay. As long as it doesn't cost tons of money, I don't see any issues in that. It sounds like a lot of it can actually be more automated, since Excel's already tracking a lot of that.
That's right.
So when we're talking about people's driving habits or vehicles in Inglewood, would we be looking at how many miles a resident drives, or how many miles a resident drives in Inglewood?
No, actually, it's VMT, so it is vehicle miles traveled, and it would be, if your trip starts in Inglewood and ends in Inglewood, that's where it would be. I can't, that's, that's one of the vagaries of the formula, is trying to, because we have so many pass-through trips, you know, what's truly generated here? But most of those transportation formulas talk about a trip that begins and ends in our community.
Wow, that's going to be a tough one.
It is, that's, that's the nature of that. As well as transit, transit data on sustainability is widely available through RTD. The only problem is, they attribute it to their entire system, not to any given community. So that's where it makes that piece of that formula much more difficult to try to ascertain. I actually reached out to, there's a petroleum and fuel cooperative that actually shows data for how much fuel is dispensed at locations, but I, but it doesn't show the community, it just shows numbers of facilities, and I don't know where that, the nomenclature for where these numbered facilities are, if it's in our community or another, and so that made it more difficult as well. But there's that data that's available. So it's just continuing to mine this data and dig deeper and find out where, where that, those fuels are dispensed, because the fuel is dispensed here, it also is gassing up, because as you know, most fuel stations have a vent to the atmosphere as well, and they're venting VOCs, volatile organic compounds, into the atmosphere from a gas station, it's the nature of the business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. And then Councilmember Barantine. I'm trying to get everybody a first bite of the apple here. We're running a little over time.
Okay, I'll be real quick. I can support any program that saves the city money. You know, when I put solar in my home, it was a, it was a net savings for me. So the investment was worth the savings, and also was beneficial to the environment. You know, one of the things that, I like a lot of these possibilities, but what is the cost, and what is this, if we spend a million dollars, then we're going to get $10,000 back, and that's sure that's, that's helpful to the city, and that is not helpful for long-term sustainability or fiscal soundness. But if, you know, we can spend money, we can show a reasonable rate of return where we can get back on this, and I think that's what I'm looking for, because I love all of these programs, but I'm not sure what the return on the investment is. And I think our residents are going to ask, well, yeah, you did this, but when are we going to get back? You know, would it have been cheaper not to do it and wait 20 years for new technology to come out? So that's what's really going to sell me on any, any of these, and I think our residents as well, is, you know, we don't want to be, you know, penny wise, pound foolish kind of thing, so that's just where I'm at. I love a lot of these projects, but how much are they going to cost for their return?
Sure. No, and that's a fair question. No, and that's a fair question. And I think, as I have enunciated this evening, echoing the comments of Councilmember Russell and, as well as your own, we need to go into this eyes wide open and very carefully, and not commit, over-commit to the cost of these, because some of them would be substantial. You know, some of the small-scale wind, for example, is very, very expensive, but it has a very quick payback. In some instances, as little as five months for what it generates. But again, there are significant studies that have to be accomplished first to see the viability of doing these projects here in our community. A couple of them that are no-brainers are, are the, are working within stream. But when you do that, of course, you're having to work with the Corps of Engineers and everybody else who is going to want to understand that you're not interfering with the, the functioning of their, of their waterways and the, another law, the waterways of the US. So we, we need to go into that, looking at that very carefully. But we do have some opportunities, and we certainly wouldn't bring something forward that wouldn't have an aggressive or a decent return of, of rate of return.
Guys, we're running a little bit over time, and I want to come back to the folks. Councilmember Berentine?
The last report that we got from Amoresco, and I do believe that there were panels put on the Simon Center as well, I don't know if those are working, if you could go ahead and check on that, was one percent. To think that the panels are providing, I've never heard anything even close to 10%. So if I've just, if I've misunderstood, I'd like to hear that. But I'm, information like that is vital information in a presentation like this, is we're moving forward to find out where we're at already. And I am a little concerned about running parallel programs before we even know how the other program is working or not working to, I don't just want to flit from one thing to the other. I want actually to put the effort and make sure we're doing it, get an assessment, and then fix, either celebrate the successes and, or fix the concerns that we have if we're not moving forward. I think there are some local things that we can do, some of the meetings that I've gone to over the last two months for community efforts that are going, I'd like to see some of that education piece come into this. I mean, there is carbon expelled from every place on your property that isn't covered and heat. And so just merely making sure that you have mulch down or something covering it or plants, there are a lot of ways for the community to do this. And you have several really successful community organizations that are doing some really fantastic education programs, and I'd like to see us get into, to that. You don't have to worry about any of the breweries anyway, because they're using all their spent grain and making sure it goes to a farm or something. But it's well taken that if there is some, on larger scale, I mean, not only that, I mean, fixes a lot of issues in the community, but one of them is to not have that waste and that additional methane. And some of that might involve some working with the health departments and some of the pickup organizations, but it's mostly trying to figure out the logistics of making that work. Apparently, people are really good at getting, picking up spent grain, because all the breweries I've talked to in the area do a beautiful job of, of making sure that that never goes to waste. So let's see if we could find out what some of the concerns are in doing that, why it's easier, or they're not looking at those alternatives. And then the waste management contract, I mean, I got a call from somebody at Simon Center wanting to know why their recycling was taken away, and they were told by the management that it was too expensive. And when I look through this contract that we're doing tonight, I don't see the recycling in there. I mean, I have other problems with the contract, but if we're going to negotiate something like that, then we should be making sure that our facilities, and especially our seniors who want to participate in their community and do this recycling, aren't being cut off from that. And maybe there's something we can do with doing negotiations for contracts for the city that makes sure that they are included and that they're not cut off from that either.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about that here at the seven o'clock hour, but that contract only was for city facilities, not for the Inglewood Housing Authority facility.
Oh, I know, but we have leverage with them if we have that. So, I mean, like I said, there's other concerns with the contract itself, but when we go into something like that, we should be looking at it to say, hey, you service these other areas, how can we make sure that those people are taken care of, too? Maybe there's some volunteer programs, some other person that can get paid to bring the things down so that it's even, but if we're not even having the conversation, we're not trying to work out the, the issue, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I'll try and make this really fast. So on the data that we have, which we do have a lot of rich data here, will our GIS folks be able to help with that? Because that's, I mean, a lot of them are trained, particularly
Sure.
...in the area environmental.
Yeah, this will be another layer of data in that, in that system, once we get that program up and operational.
If not, get a grad student that's, you know, in a GIS program to take it on as a project. It could be something, we could get some free, free work, and someone gets some great internship experience. Regional issue, this really is a regional issue. I mean, we can do all we want as a city, and then Denver might not, or Denver might do what they want. It's just like water. We all do our own little thing, but we got to keep tracking it with each other. So I don't know, Mayor, if you have any sense of whether the mayors have an initiative around this right now that we should be looking at and maybe taking some cues from, or maybe we lead the way and say, hey, let's talk about this, because this is a longer, I know some cities are taking this up, what are we all doing together? We can, we can maybe gain some things from that. The other thing is a three, there's two pieces of these pies that you're using here, but it would be really interesting, and I would not want to make this more work, but what is the third pie of the city itself with our buildings? Could we, could we show our slice of it and say, we, we know we can control ours to some extent. We can't control those other two big ones, but we could be a leader and show the way. We could, or we could set some, some goals for all of us together, but if we're not doing it ourselves, it's pretty hard to tell commercial and others that, you know, you need to do this, but we're not going to. So, but I think we need to show due diligence on our own parts. So maybe it's a public pot piece, like, there's three, there's the public, and maybe that includes the schools and, in the city, and then residential and commercial. But I'm still very, very curious about what cities are doing to incentivize the commercial area, since that's the lion's share. It's not the only thing. But if you're going to look at the three Es, which the social is really equity, there should be a fourth in there, and that's what I think others are talking about, and that's education. So there's really a four Es here. What are we doing? And keep Inglewood beautiful. So wonderful commission setup that could be very, very useful with this, and tap into the folks in the community that really want to see this move.
Thank you.
So I want to know what our next steps are, I guess, too, is what, what are we going to do now? I love that you, this is great. I'm so glad we had this.
Thank you. You know, I'll try to wrap up our conversation here. You know, I just wanted to respond real briefly on the cost concerns. You know, I think that we're really lucky here in Inglewood to not, you know, have to look at these from solely an environmental sustainability standpoint. I don't think that's mutually exclusive with all the projects we're talking about from just cost savings. You know, I, I love the, you know, four E sort of bottom-line approach, but if we look at them just economically, I think these make sense. And so I feel like, you know, just recognizing, I think, where we're at in this process and recognizing there's so much low-hanging fruit that just makes economic sense. I think the, you know, the staff is going to give us some more information regarding that Amoresco deal, but I, you know, I think it's stated in that contract. But certainly, the cost savings, like I said, was guaranteed as part of that contract. So maybe it's just a, as simple as us all reviewing that contract again. I'm planning on moving this forward by bringing, bringing perhaps an Energy Action Plan forward to a study session, as well as special projects on a one-off basis.